Good afternoon. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York. At the conclusion of our public session, we will be going into executive session to discuss personnel matters. At the end of the executive session, the Board will not reconvene in public session. I would like to read the following notice into the record. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public, and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. The public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs at which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are always distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law, and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise, which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warnings, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws, which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. May I now request that everyone take a moment to mute your cellphone or BlackBerry. As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board of Trustees live on Cable Channel 75. The meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can also be accessed via the CUNY website. Congratulations are in order for trustee Joseph Loda, who was confirmed last month as chairman and chief executive officer of the Metropolitan Transportation.[184.12][184.12][applause] Congratulations are also in order for trustee Carol Robles-Roman, who was recently awarded the 2011 Poder ABC Justice Award as part of the Poder ABC Business Awards, which celebrate excellence in leadership by men and women in the Americas.[212.62][212.62][applause] Congratulations are in order to our chancellor, Matthew Goldstein, who was honored by Governing Magazine as one of nine leaders, recognized as the best and the brightest in state, city, and county government throughout the nation.[235.48][235.48][applause] The award for our chancellor was presented to him at a dinner in Washington by former Governor John Engler, who is president of the Business Roundtable. On behalf of the Board, I would like to thank trustees Valerie Beal, Frida Foster, and Kathleen Pacilli for representing CUNY at the 42nd Annual Association of Community College Trustees Leadership Conference in Dallas. Assisted by Secretary to the Board, Horek Mercerlian, the trustees made several well-attended presentations, including one on CUNY's ASAP program and led a roundtable discussion on the Pathways Initiative. Trustee Pacilli also represented CUNY at the Association of Community College Trustees National Legislative Summit in Washington that focused on critical needs of our nation's community colleges and students. On behalf of the Board, I want to extend our deepest condolences to trustee Carol Robles-Roman and her family on the recent passing of her mother, Inez Robles, whose commitment to social justice will surely endure. Please accept our sympathies. I also note with sorrow the passing of Jacqueline G. Wexler on January 19th, who served as president of Hunter College from 1970 to 1979, and who among her many accomplishments was instrumental in obtaining state support for the building of Hunter College East and Hunter College West. Our hearts also go out to the Kupferberg family on the recent passing of Selma Kupferberg, who with her husband Max was a visionary and generous benefactor of Queens College. May I now call on trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to two Queens College faculty who received prestigious book awards. Distinguished Professor Kimiko Khan was honored with the Asian American Literary Award in Poetry, and Professor Karen Strausler received the Gregory Batson Book Prize for her most recent book. Two other Queens faculty have received National Science Foundation faculty early career development awards. Queens College was also listed among top producers of U.S. Fulbright Scholars by Type of Institution for 2011-2012 by the Chronicle of Higher Education. Congratulations to the City College and Queensborough Community College for being listed among top producers of U.S. Fulbright Scholars by Type of Institution, Masters and Community College respectively, for 2011-2012 by the Chronicle of Higher Education. Congratulations to Hunter College Department of Biology distinguished professor Marie Felbin, who was recently elected a Fellow of the American Association for the Advancement of Science. Hunter College was recently ranked 12th among Masters institutions as one of the year's top producers of U.S. Fulbright students by the Institute of International Education and the U.S. Department of State Bureau of Education and Cultural Affairs. Hunter was also listed among the top 10 Best Value Public Colleges for 2011 by USA Today. Congratulations to Baruch College of Public Affairs Dean David Birdsell, who was among four active public affairs faculty elected to a three-year term on the Executive Council of the National Association of Public Affairs and Administration. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I now call on trustee Rita DiMartino to announce student and alumni honors?
Congratulations to the 18 Medgar Evers College students, who along with the three faculty members, recently attended the University of Maryland Baltimore County's undergraduate research conference and gave nine presentations of their research work. Congratulations to New York City College of Technology Entertainment Technology students who swept the top three awards at a recent video competition sponsored by the Federal Reserve Bank of New York's Office of Regional and Community Outreach and the New York Bankers Association. Congratulations to City College 2010 MFA Film Graduate Jack Borst, whose humorous ad for Chevrolet was chosen from about 200 submissions to air during the Super Bowl, and to the four recent MFA program graduates, who are editors of a new literary magazine, The Coffin Factory, which was recently featured in the New York Times Style Magazine. Congratulations to the 23 Hostos Community College students, who recently passed the American Registry of Radiology Technologists Certified Examination with an average score of 89.3, and for maintaining a 100% pass rate on this examination for the 15th consecutive year. Congratulations to the Hunter College Model UN Team for winning top prizes at the recent National Model UN Conference Competitions, representing the United States and the Russian Federation. Hunter College 1951 alumna, Dr. Mildred S. Dresselhaus, was awarded the Enrico Fermi Award for her innovative and pioneering scientific achievements. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. You have a list of grants and gifts received by the university subsequent to the November 28th, 2011 meeting. It's available at the table and in the trustee's calendar book. I'd like now to call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to welcome everybody back, as we are now in the very early stages of the spring semester. Let me start with a brief snapshot on our enrollment and admissions to date. Overall headcount is up about 1% compared to spring 2011, while FTE enrollment has increased by almost 2%. That's always good when the FTEs exceed the headcount. Applications for fall 2012 are being processed at a record pace, driven in large part by a 36% increase in students applying to the McCauley Honors College. On the state budget side, we are working with state and city officials as we seek to improve the improvements in the proposed state executive budget. I testified in Albany before the New York State Senate Finance Committee and the New York State Assembly Ways and Means Committee, and that was on February 1st. Everyone should have in front of you our proverbial gold sheet, which indicates the operating and capital improvements we are seeking. One house budget bills are expected by March 12th, with budget adoption slated for March 31st, and we understand that the legislature is on an accelerated schedule. Of course, other issues, such as pension reform and redistricting, may take, as we all expect, center stage, but our job is to maintain strong and visible process throughout this time. Thus far, we have generated 93,000 emails through the SupportCUNY.org organization campaign. I'd like to thank the following presidents, who have been serving as borough coordinators, to organize an appropriate meeting with legislators consistent with the timing of the state budget. In Staten Island, Tomas Morales, who hosted a legislative breakfast on January 20th. Ricardo Fernandez organized meetings with legislators in Albany on February 14th for representatives from our Bronx campuses. Russ Hotzler coordinated a Brooklyn legislative breakfast that was held on February 24th. Jim Iskins hosted a Queens legislative breakfast on February 24th. And in Manhattan, Jeremy Travis is working with Borough President Scott Stringer to organize a legislative breakfast. Thank you for all taking time out of a very busy schedule to do that important work. I'd also like to report that the CUNY's luncheon at the Black Puerto Rican Hispanic and Asian Caucus Conference took place in Albany on Saturday, February 28th. I've gone every year since being named chancellor to this conference, and I must say, this by far was the most energetic and largely subscribed to of all of those in the past. Elected officials who spoke include Secretary of State Cesar Perala, State Controller Tom DiNapoli, City Controller John Liu, Senate Democratic Leader John Sampson, and chairs of the conference assembly members Kareen Kamara and Nick Perry. At the luncheon, I was pleased to award a York College student, Yisa Romala, with the chancellor's Decade of Science Alumni Achievement Award. Yisa Romala is finishing up his PhD in Physics at the University of Michigan. He spoke articulately and smartly about his work, and I think we're all justly proud of his outstanding accomplishments to date. I also was pleased to give Lillet Lopez, an outstanding student, a leader award, named to the late Ernesto Malavi, who we all remember with great affection and respect. With Vice Chancellor Eduardo Martí's assistant, the CUNY Community College Presidents are working closely with the Community College Presidents of SUNY on increasing state aid, and that is one of the components of our legislative push, that we hope to be somewhat successful working alongside our SUNY colleagues. On the city budget side, Mayor Bloomberg issued the FY 2013 City Preliminary Budget on February 2nd. The preliminary budget does not recommend any reductions to the community college operating budget for the year, for the current year, or for 2013. Changes in the level of city support are a result of updated projections of pension costs, which are funded outside the city's budget. The mayor's plan continues funding at current levels in FY 2013 for the following very fine programs: the ASAP, which is the Accelerated Study and Associate Programs, CUNY Prep, the Civic Justice Corps, the Young Men's Initiative. The preliminary budget, as it pertains to CUNY, will be the topic of the next New York City Council Committee on Higher Education, taking place on March 9th. I'd like to report very briefly before I turn the microphone over to Executive Vice Chancellor Lexa Logue on the Pathways Project. As all of you know, this was approved, the framework for this important initiative, was approved by the Board last June, and I'd like to tell you that each of our campuses are working diligently. I've spoken to every single president who informs me that their provosts and deans are working with large numbers of faculty across the university on this very important project. Mr. Chairman, I also spent the weekend reading the California Master Plan of 1960, which is now 50 years old, and the echoes of that master plan and the iterations that have continued to reverberate throughout the United States about that master plan have very much its roots in some of the things that we are doing here at CUNY, in particular their Common Core, that they have established, that is a common core between the CSU system and the University of California system, with the 2.5 million students that are studying in their community colleges. I never fully appreciated how huge the community colleges are in the state of California, and the problems that that master plan has developed over these 50 years about the paucity of students that are finishing baccalaureate programs, and how this core that has now been established, they think is going to be a pivotal cog in the wheel to help ameliorate that particular problem, which has plagued the University of California system in many ways. Last June, as you remember, the Board passed a landmark resolution, Pathways to Degree Completion, that establishes a framework of rigorous coursework, whose content and standards are set by the faculty, by which students can transfer seamlessly among all of the community colleges. This has been a work in progress at this university for too many decades, and finally, I think this Board has gotten their arms around what has been viewed as an intractable problem, and I suspect that we're well on our way to helping to advance the goals of our students and to create the kind of rigor and accountability throughout core curricula that we have here at the university. I'd like to ask Lexa Logue, just very briefly, to give you a snapshot of where we are in that process, and then after that, I'll continue on the rest of my report, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Please, yeah.
Okay, thank you. We're making excellent progress with the many tasks that have been assigned to us in the resolution that the Board passed last June, so that we can implement Pathways on schedule in September 2013. You'll recall that the resolution has three parts. The first part is general education, which consists of a common core of 30 credits for all CUNY campuses, and six to 12 additional credits of general education for the senior colleges, in other words, the baccalaureate programs. The second part of Pathways is that we would decide on the first three to six entry courses for the largest transfer majors across CUNY, and third, that all electives will transfer. So to say a little bit about those first two parts. The Common Core, which is 30 credits for all the campuses, last December, the chancellor accepted the recommendations of the Pathways Task Force with respect to the overall structure of the Common Core. The task force consisted of 47 faculty, four students, four campus-based administrators, and was led by CUNY Law School Dean Michelle Anderson. The Common Core itself has two parts: the required Common Core, which consists of six credits of English composition, three credits of science, and three credits of math or quantitative reasoning, for a total of 12 credits; and then the flexible core, which has six three-credit courses to be taken from five thematic areas, so that there are two courses from one of those areas. The Common Core, as specified in the Board's resolution, has been defined according to learning outcomes, and there's much flexibility for campuses built into the Common Core framework. Campuses choose which courses they want to submit to satisfy the learning outcomes, and they have many options, such as requiring that the sixth course in the flexible core be taken from a specific one of the flexible, the five thematic areas. The resolution also requires that to be offered as part of the Common Core, a course must be approved by a CUNY-wide faculty committee. Therefore, we have now set up a committee, which will be meeting soon, that has eight subcommittees, one for each area of the Common Core, and that will be doing these reviews. This committee is chaired by Professor Phil Kassenitz, who is a sociologist at the Graduate Center, who also teaches undergraduates at Hunter. This committee has 130 faculty on it. The office of our Associate Vice Chancellor and CIO, Brian Cohen, is in the final stages of building a SharePoint site for us that will receive and track courses submitted to the Common Core Course Review Committee for Approval, which is essential to facilitating the work of this very large and complex committee. In terms of the majors, last fall, we established seven major committees, consisting entirely of 73 faculty, each with a chair, and the chair of all of the committees together is the president of the Graduate Center, Bill Kelly, and their job was to set the CUNY-wide three to six entry courses for each major. They are about to release their draft recommended courses for comment, so they're making very good progress. We will soon be establishing four more major committees. Therefore, putting this all together, we have involved 47 faculty on the task force, 73 on the major committees, 130 on the Common Core Course Review Committee, so over 200 different faculty, all with tenure, in this project so far, and more will be involved soon. There are, in addition to the curricular issues that the faculty are working on, there are many implementation complexities to Pathways. For example, how will faculty and students and staff know which courses are part of Pathways on each campus? Will students who are already at CUNY be allowed to opt into Pathways, or does it only apply to students who are new in the fall of 2013? And should there be centralized training for advisors on Pathways requirements? To help in answering these questions, each campus has appointed a Pathways liaison, and they have already started meeting with their convener, who is Senior University Dean Bob Tatchick. The colleges, as the chancellor said, the colleges are working hard already on which courses will be in their Common Core, the college option, and to align their majors. April 1st is the deadline for the colleges to submit their Pathways implementation plans to the Central Office. As part of these plans, they can request funds from the Central Office, for example, for faculty summer salary to work on courses, for training of advisors on the new requirements, for programming assistance, et cetera. The colleges are coming up with some amazing creative ideas for how to structure their Common Core and college options, ideas that will help them to maintain their individual characters, but at the same time facilitate student transfer. It's been very exciting to hear what the colleges are doing. We're very pleased with the progress we've made so far, but there is much more to do. The Common Core courses must be fully approved up through and including the Central Office in order to be submitted by December to the chancellor's university report for Board Approval at the January 2013 Board Meeting, which will then allow colleges to put these courses in their fall 2013 course schedules, which they release starting in spring 2013. And just want to say again to thank you to the great many people who have helped us to get to this point, especially the chancellor, who's been such a magnificent leader in all of this initiative, and we all look forward to the next steps, culminating with much easier transfer and a rigorous, high-quality general education curriculum for all of our undergraduates. Thank you.
Wow. I don't know if any of you have any questions at this point, but you could see there's an awful lot of work done, and it's not about me, it's about Lexa Logue, who's been carrying this burden with an enormous amount of faculty and administrators here at the university. So, a lot has been accomplished and much more needs to be done.[1636.33][1636.33][applause] Let me move on to another very big project, the CUNY Master Plan. Pursuant to Article 125, I'm sure you're all familiar with that, of the New York State Education Law, CUNY is required to formulate a long-range master plan once every four years and make recommendations to the Board of Regents. These plans cover all aspects of the university, but focus on the academic enterprise. Our next plan will cover 2012 through 2016, and is due to New York State this coming June. Work on the master plan began last August, when Executive Vice Chancellor Logue wrote to the college presidents and chief academic officers of all CUNY campuses, asking for their ideas and concepts for inclusion in the plan. During the summer and into the fall, there was also consultation with the chancellery and other central office personnel, various groups, such as the Council of Presidents, Council of Academic Affairs, and the Committee on Academic Technology, the University Faculty Senate, chairs of all the Boards of Trustees, standing committees, and students as well. All of the information gathered is being used to construct a new master plan, and a draft will soon be sent to the CUNY community, including the Board of Trustees for comments. And I'm not going to go into detail, because this is another very massive undertaking, but let me just touch on a few of the overarching themes that thus far have received a lot of support from all of the constituencies that we have spoken with to date. The themes of the plan include the financial stability that CUNY will enjoy over the next four years due to our planned tuition increases, and the maintenance of effort provision that was included in state law, along with the ability of the campuses to maintain all of the tuition revenue that they have collected. Continued evolution of the integrated university, CUNY's increasing use of and gener- Continued evolution of the integrated university, CUNY's increasing use of and generation of data to inform decision-making, CUNY's ongoing dedication to control growth and to quality, and one major component of the plan will emphasize CUNY's role in economic development. We await Senior Vice Chancellor Rick Schaefer's report. He is chairing a task force on jobs, addressing three major questions that we await to hear from. One are what are the jobs requiring a college degree that are going unfulfilled or where employers are dissatisfied with the labor pool? What are the jobs and skill requirements of the future of workers with a college degree? And how can CUNY and other institutions of higher education better prepare students for the labor market today and in the future? Fundamental to our work here will be the CUNY Economic Development Council, the CUNY Ventures, which is a subsidiary, it's a for-profit subsidiary of the EDC, and my work as chair of the New York City Regional Economic Development Councils. On March 16th, the college presidents will be meeting all day to focus in depth on the master plan and among other topics that we will discuss. It is my intention to bring the master plan to the Board of Trustees at the June meeting, following continued consultations and the public hearing. The trustees that we have spoken with thus far are those that chair the standing committees of the board, and I hope other trustees who have an interest in opining upon various themes that the university should be looking at. I very much encourage you to be in touch with us so that we can listen and see how we can incorporate your ideas for inclusion in this important document. I want to emphasize that in the not-too-distant past, master plans were not used as a vehicle in the manner in which they are used today. When we construct our budget message, the ideas that are in that budget message now derive directly from the master plan. So over the next few years, everything that we put in our budget proposals, all of the allocations that we make are directly related back to the themes that we think are realistic for the university in our master plan. So I can't underscore the importance of this exercise and look forward to as many ideas as we can garner through the various communities in this, in this university. And Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, let me just conclude by congratulating President Felix Matos Rodriguez and President Gail Mello for being selected to serve on the Century Foundation's Task Force on Preventing Community Colleges from Becoming Separate and Unequal. The task force of distinguished individuals from two-year and four-year institutions, scholars of higher education, and representatives of the business, philanthropic, and civil rights communities will consider strategies to strengthen community colleges, a major theme of our president. If there's one theme that this president has spoken about eloquently, forcefully, and continually is the role of community colleges, and certainly, we have taken a leadership role in the work that we have done here at this university to rise to that occasion. I'd also like to congratulate again Felix Matos Rodriguez on his appointment by the American Council on Education Board of Directors as the board's liaison to the ACE Commission, ACE Commission on Inclusion, which advises ACE on its programs and activities in the diversity and inclusion area, and to Bill Pollard, who is currently serves as a member of the commission. Kudos to President Tomas Morales on receiving the Staten Island Chamber of Commerce Lewis R. Miller Business Leadership Award on February 16th. And it gives me tremendous pleasure to announce that a Baruch College Master in Financial Engineering team won the 2012 Rotman International Trading Competition, an annual event held in the heart of Canada's financial district in downtown Toronto, and brings teams of students and faculty from universities worldwide to participate in a unique three-day conference and competition. The two teams from Baruch finished in the top five ahead of Northwestern, Duke, Rutgers, Boston University, MIT, Columbia, and a whole bunch of other fairly well-known universities.[934.93][934.93](applause) Congratulations, Ms. Wallenstein, although when I was in your seat, I started that program, but it's you and the other presidents.[947.63][947.63](laughter) It's you and the other presidents that really have taken it over, and it's really terrific. And lastly, let me just say that CUNY TV is going to need to lease space for all of the Emmys that it continues to get. It has nine Emmy nominations for their work on The Wave of York, Canapé, and Science U, which if any of you have not seen Science U, you really ought to take a look at it, and for a music, and an original music score for a PSE about CUNY. Kudos to Bob Isaacson and to Jay Hirschen, who have really moved this.[992.13][992.13](applause) Lastly, I'd like to remind everyone that in anticipation of April's presidential primary election, March is Voter Awareness Month at CUNY. With the team, march forward. So I encourage the CUNY community to register to vote and to participate in the upcoming elections. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Are there questions or comments for the chancellor on his report? Sir, your mention of the California Master Plan calls to mind the great Clark Kerr, who left as president of the University of California later in the sixties, and said as he left that he was leaving just as he arrived, fired with enthusiasm.[1047.24][1047.24](laughter) We'll turn now to policy items requiring a vote. I would like to move the adoption of the Chancellor's University Report for January 23rd, 2012, and February 27th, 2012. You will find a copy of these reports on the, on the table. As you can see, the chancellor's been busy. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you very much. I'd also like to move the adoption of the minutes of the regular board meeting of November 28th, 2011. You have a copy of the minutes in your meeting books. Are there, may I have a second, please? Are there any comments on the minutes? Any revisions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, extensions? The minutes are adopted. We'll turn next to the committee reports. We'll hear first from the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. I'd like to call on Committee Chair Wellington Chen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That is February 6th, 2012, meeting, the committee approved the following policy matters. Calendar number 3A, application to register the dual joint ASBS in accounting for forensics, economics at Queensborough Community College and John Jay College. Through this proposed two-plus-two-plus partnership between Queensborough Community College and John Jay College, after earning their associate degrees, students will transfer seamlessly to John Jay to earn their baccalaureate degrees. The proposed curriculum combines accounting principles and finance ethics and criminology and law and investigative techniques. It will prepare students for employment where accounting firms and governmental entities engage in investigation and preventing illegal financial activity. Calendar number 3B, application to register BTEC in construction engineering technology and New York City College of Technology. The BTEC in construction engineering technology is a degree completion? Is a degree completion program primary for students holding an associate degree in a related field? This affordable degree will open up more career paths for graduates because construction management professionals will continue to be in high demand in New York metropolitan area. Because of accreditation requirements, a waiver of the 120 credit policy is requested for this 124 credit program. Calendar number 3C, application to register the BA in disability studies at the School of Professional Studies at Graduate School and University Center. This fully online program is designed as a completion program for students who have earned at least thirty college credits. The program aims at preparing students who can communicate effectively, think critically, and demonstrate an understanding and appreciation of diversity. Survey data show that the program will be particular interests to students already working in the field and interested in advancing their careers in human services. Calendar number 3D, application to register the MA in urban studies at the School of Professional Studies at the Graduate School and University Center. This interdisciplinary degree examines workforce issues across the curriculum, focusing on intersections between urban studies and labor studies. It will help students achieve career objectives by equipping, equipping them with advanced knowledge and skills in the areas of urban policy as well as administration and delivery of social services. Calendar number 3E, application to register the AA in psychology at LaGuardia Community College. This proposed program builds on existing psychology track in the liberal arts and sciences major and respond to a significant student demand. Psychology remains one of the most popular undergraduate majors in the United States. Students will be prepared to transfer into psychology programs at four-year institutions. One articulation agreement with York College has already been signed, and others are being developed. Calendar number 3F, resolution to close the SEEK department at Hunter College and create the Percy Sutton Program of Seek at Hunter College. The Hunter Seek Department was originally an academic department offering remedial courses, but its current function has shifted to academic advisement and counseling tutoring and student support services. Academic courses are no longer offered in the department, consistent with system-wide practice. In pursuant to a thorough performance review, the SEEK department is being converted to a program reporting directly to the provost. Faculty are being transferred to other academic departments and will retain their tenured certificated status. Calendar number 3G, resolution to close the academic foundations division and make us ever's college. This action will ensure that the faculty from academic foundations will be housed in departments where other faculty in relevant academic disciplines, which will enhance the assistance of students' development needs in the preparation for college courses. All affected faculty will retain their tenured certificated status. Calendar number 3I, resolution to establish universities, Mexican studies to be housed at Lehman College. The proposed institute builds on a nearly a decade of work by CUNY Working Task Force on strengthening educational opportunities for Mexicans and Mexican-Americans. The 2010 census showed the Mexican population of cities to be close to 320,000, which represents a growth of 58% over the last decade. The institute will promote research on the entire lifecycle of Mexicans in the, in New York, facilitate curriculum development, organize academic conferences, assist students with finding internship opportunities, and will work with community-based organizations on activities promoting education and empowerment. Calendar number 3J, resolution to establish the university's institute for state and local governors at Baruch College. The, this institute will provide nonpartisan, nonideological research and professional development opportunities for state and local governments as well as non-governmental organizations. The institute will aim to harness the efforts of scholars and practitioners across full-range of policy challenges faced by the city, state, and region. The institute will be housed at Baruch College, where, which has the largest concentration of faculty with rated expertise. The faculty from across the system will participate in shaping the research and training programs. Calendar number 3K, resolution to confer honorary degrees at City College and Queens College. In accordance with a new procedure implemented last semester, all proposals for honorary degrees are to be submitted to CAPRA for review and approval before being forwarded to full Board of Trustees. City College wishes to confer the Honorary Doctor of Humane Letters upon Kathleen Battle, the award-winning operatic soprano, Ray Suarez, the senior correspondent for the NewsHour on PBS, the Doctor of Science on Sheldon Wine, CCMY distinguished professor Emeritus of Biological and Mechanical Engineering, and Harvey Keighley, founder and president of Mini Circuits, Inc., who's a CUNY class of 1960 alum. Queens College wishes to confer the Honorary Doctor of Humane Letters on Sarah Millan-McQueen, who's a Queens College class of 1962 alumna and the founder, publisher, and executive chair of Sage Publications, a leading academic publishing house, and an Ohan Bamuk winner of 2006 Nobel Prize for Literature. Item 3A through 3K, approved by the committee, I recommend the approval for the board, with the exception of, I skip over, I've been asked to table item number 3H, which is resolution to amend the university human research protection policy.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to get some clarification on the calendar C, when they're talking about disability. I'd like to know what kind of disability are they talking about? Are they physical disability or mental disability? If they are mental disability, I'd like to know how prepared will they be to really judge any individual suffering from any mental illness, if they are disabled or not? I'd like to get some information about it, please.
All right, I'd like to ask John Mogalescu to respond.
This baccalaureate degree is a first of its kind almost, and, and will prepare people who are in the workforce now with an opportunity to gain additional skills, to be able to perform their jobs better than they are now. And as if you've followed the, the series of articles in the New York Times having to do with the workforce in this field, you will understand the need for this kind of program.
Yeah, are they talking physical or mental disability? What kind of disability are you talking about?
People who work in the field of disability studies, do both physical and mental disabilities. And you have to understand that this particular program is a baccalaureate program. It is not an advanced degree program.
No, but my question is, how prepared are they going to be to determine if anyone's suffering from schizophrenia, bipolar illness, major depressive disorder, so on and so forth? Are they, how are they going to be able to determine if that patient is disabled or not? Because this is a very difficult situation. I do that in my practice as a psychiatrist all of the time, and it's not easy to determine who is disabled or not.
I understand that, trustee, but, but the people here who are being trained are the frontline workers who work in places like group homes and different kinds of facilities to care for those people who have disabilities. They are not the people like the psychologists and the psychologists who are doing this kind of advanced kind of diagnosis.
Right. These, these are, these people are people involved in care for people with disabilities. They are not involved in diagnosis.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to stand corrected on the calendar number 3H. This is the item, resolution to amend the university human research protection policy.
I just have one point, just to finish the prior point that trustee Morales was making. I think the issue of mental illness should be included in the disability studies, and I don't know if that's one of the points that you were making, but I think it's very, very important that it be a very inclusive subject matter. So when the curriculum is being developed, I think it's important that, that area should be included, so if we can add that.
It is included.
It's also very important to make sure that individuals who are doing the examination, disability examination are current in Spanish. They are dealing with Hispanic people, because I can tell you, sometimes we are making a lot of mistakes by determining disability individual that doesn't understand at all the language or the culture and the value of that individual. That, that, I think is a very important factor that we have to take in consideration.
I think one of the, the great things- I think one of the great things about this program is that it will enable people who have not had college degrees to be trained in areas that they have never been trained before, in that people who have been caring for people with disabilities, and including, you know, mental illness as well as physical disabilities, have been generally people either who do not have a baccalaureate degree or people who have degrees in other areas, maybe psychology or sociology or others. The thing about this particular degree is that it is specific to the area of disabilities, and so will provide training in a whole array of settings that have not been provided before. And all of your points are well taken as well.
Fabulous.
Are there other questions before we return to 3H? All right, let's put 3H on the table.
This is a proposed, the proposed policy complements CUNY's existing policy on human subjects research protection, which was adopted in 2009. The present document addresses the general structure and operations of CUNY's institutional review boards and permit the continuous adoption of standard operating procedures to ensure compliance with evolving federal regulations. I understand Vice Chancellor Rick Schaefer has something to say about it.
Yes, this resolution doesn't change the substance of our policy, which is largely governed by federal law and regulations. What it does do is, because the original policy had a detailed set of procedures that was connected to it, it restates the policy in a more general term and delegates to the Vice Chancellor for Research in conjunction with my office to keep the detailed procedures up to date and in conformity with federal guidelines. One correction that I would like to make, at the end of the explanation section, there is a paragraph, a short paragraph, that reads, "It is anticipated that the research foundation will also adopt the proposed policy, and the RF will also apply it to all research conducted by RF employees." That paragraph was, I'm afraid, left over from the last time we did this resolution. The RF already has a policy, and so it's really not necessary or appropriate for that last sentence to be in there.
All right, now may we have a second. Second. All right, now may we have further discussion. Professor Cooper.
This is a question. I just can't figure out how it works. A student takes a two-year major in a community college in a field, not in liberal arts, but let's say English, transfers to a senior college. All of the 30 credit electives, I'm assuming it's 30 credits beyond the core, or maybe it's 18 credits, transfer. What is this, what are the implications for the same major in the senior college?
Wait, I, I'm not sure I understand the question. What are the?
The senior college major, let's say, in one of the liberal arts is somewhere between 36 and 40 credits in history and psychology and so on. Students coming in with a major from a two-year college, not just the general ed, but a major, and the senior college is not permitted to, I mean, the senior college is required to recognize those courses. I'm trying to figure out what the senior college does with its major.
Okay, the senior college, by the resolution passed by the board last June, although I'm not sure which motion we're speaking to here.
Neither am I. Does this apply to the accounting for forensic accounting?
No, no, I, well, I was looking at the AA in Psychology, but it could be anything.
Okay, the resolution passed by the board last June specifies that the Common Core will transfer as 30 credits, and then we are setting up three to six courses for each major that will be the same for each major across CUNY. If a student takes more than three to six courses from a major at a community college, those courses will not necessarily transfer as major courses to the senior college. However, what the resolution also specifies is that the student will get credit for those courses, right, as electives. So that's what happens.
There's very likely to be an overlap of senior and two-year college courses in a field, and the student rightly, and I would be in favor of this, doesn't want to do it again. The senior college, the student in the senior college may come in with half the major completed.
Mm-hmm. Yes, and we, it's our-
And then, do we graduate them with 90 credits?
No, no, no. Students have to complete 120 credits for a typical degree. So if a student has already finished a large part of their major and they've done the Common Core, they still, of course, have to do part of the college option, at least part, at least six credits, if not 12, when they transfer to the senior colleges, and anything they have left will be electives.
Are there other questions or comments? Yes.
I would like to speak in regard to item 3A and 3F. For item 3A, as I previously mentioned at the last board meeting, I'm always in favor of a joint working relationship between the community college and the senior college because that's, that go into the benefit of all our students, and definitely that will help improve their graduation rate at our community colleges. So I'm always in favor of that, and I'd like to encourage that once again. In regard to item 3F, which is the Hunter College abolition of the SEEK department. After the last week borough hearing in Brooklyn, I believe there were some concern about this change. In addition, it was also not provided at the board committee meeting that the actual student government at Hunter was in favor or against this abolition of the department. So even though I'm a little reluctant to be in favor, I will still do so because I would like to believe that Hunter College has the best interests of the SEEK student at heart, and this will be able to improve the quality of education provided to the SEEK student at the college. I would also like to recommend that this board has some type of mechanism. Of course, if it doesn't already have one, to get a feedback after a year or two in this, in this program change. So we as a board know if the change we approved was successful or not, and take any corrective action if needed. Thanks.
All right. Are there any other?
Oh, I just, I just want to add, yes, we will do that review.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other comments, questions? All right, you have 11 items before you for approval. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Are there any opposed, abstentions? Okay, those carry.
Informational item. Dr. Lowe also gave an update on the development of the master plan that New York State requests CUNY to complete every four years. This master plan will focus on the university's financial stability over the next few years and our campus's ability to manage their increased enrollment. Chancellor Goldstein added that he will be briefing the trustee on the master plan at an upcoming meeting, well before the final report is due, and has always done, has always been done. The trustee will be asked for comments. She also stated the summaries of other university master plans as well as CUNY's last three master plans will be made available to trustees as well. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. I'd like to call on trustee Valerie Beal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm pleased to present for the board's consideration the items that the Committee for Faculty, Staff, and Administration reviewed at its meeting on February 6th. Item 1, item 4A and 4B designate two new distinguished professors effective February 1st, 2012. The committee has reviewed these outstanding appointments and is pleased to recommend their approval. They are as follows. The appointment of Dr. Mitchell Shaffler as Distinguished Professor of Biomedical Engineering at the City College of New York, and the appointment of Dr. Carol Gould as Distinguished Professor of Philosophy at Hunter College. Mr. Chair, I am pleased to present these appointments for the board's approval.
Thank you. I would like to second the motion. Are there questions or comments on this, on these two appointments? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed, abstentions? Those appointments are adopted.
Mr. Chair, I'm delighted that both of these new distinguished professors are able to join us today. I would therefore invite President of City College to introduce Professor Shaffler, after which the President of Hunter College will introduce Dr. Gould.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It truly is my pleasure to recommend with my highest enthusiasm that Professor Mitchell B. Shaffler of City College's Biomedical Engineering Department be appointed at the rank of CUNY Distinguished Professor. Dr. Shaffler is an eminent scholar and researcher, teacher, and a celebrated member of his profession. He's received enthusiastic support from all 12 of the external evaluators, including members of the National Academy of Engineering, distinguished endowed professors, and distinguished international scientists. Dr. Shaffler is a renowned expert in the field of bone remodeling in response to mechanical forces, which has critical relevance to major diseases today, including osteoarthritis and osteoporosis. Prior to joining the Department of Biomedical Engineering in 2008, Mitch was Director of Orthopedic Research at New York's world-renowned Mount Sinai School of Medicine. He's continued that trajectory of excellence that has greatly enhanced his international reputation since arriving at City College. And I must say, I am so truly impressed that he's continued his scholarly research career, but he is also the kind of professor that we want at City College. He is absolutely enthralled and dedicated to the undergraduate biomedical engineering profession as well. He's a superb teacher and loves teaching undergraduate courses in engineering, which is just spectacular. He's received many prestigious awards. Some of his most recent awards are Remodeling in Bone Award from the International Bone and Mineral Society. He's the youngest person to have ever achieved this award. He was also recently elected as a Fellow of the American Association of Anatomists, a recognition bestowed on fewer than 5% of its members. He was also recently elected a member of the American Institute of Medical and Biomedical Engineers during the past year. One of the gold standards for accomplishment of a scientist and engineer is the record of citations, and what that means is how many times his publications are cited by other scholars within and around the field. According to a letter from Alan Gredinsky, the Director of MIT Center for Biomedical Engineering, and I quote, "Mitch has some 5,000 citations and more than 500 in 2010 alone. His H-index is 39, making him one of the most highly cited and highest-impact scholar in the field of bone mechanics and biomedical engineering." He goes on to say that he has garnered, Mitch has garnered nearly $15 million in research support from the NIH, as well as NASA and the Department of Defense. This funding, in addition to his continuous R01, which are Independent Investigator NIH, National Institutes of Health awards, that he's received over the past 20 years, that's an amazing accomplishment. As a researcher myself, who spent 25 years with continuous NIH funding, I can tell you it's no mean feat to keep that level of funding through your career. Since joining City College, he's generated an additional $5 million in research funding. He's made numerous seminal contributions in bone discovery and bone biomechanics. He has revolutionized the work on understanding how microscopic mechanisms and disease consequences of bone fatigue, and that means those of us, as you age, you generally, your bones become fatigued just from wear and tear of walking, going upstairs, and natural consequences of aging. He's discovered cellular and molecular mechanisms of how bone regenerates and heals itself, new concepts in those areas, and breakthroughs in our scope of knowledge on mechanics and biology. They are incredible impacts. He's an amazing scholar, and truly, Mitch, it's our privilege and our pleasure to have you as part of our faculty, so.
I guess I got the, I guess I got the chance to say something now. So first off, I should start by thanking the board and the chancellor, but Lisa, that was really incredible. Thank you. And, you know, I'm really flattered, and there's not much else I can tell you about me. Lisa's done a really good job. So, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, Chancellor Goldstein, thank you all for this honor and this privilege. What Lisa didn't mention is that I've actually been part of the City College and the CUNY initiative for a lot longer than the three years that I've been at City College. Even when I was at Mount Sinai, I was a major participant in the New York Center for Biomedical Engineering, which is the interinstitutional consortium that Shelley Weinbaum founded in the mid-'90s. And I was honored and delighted when Shelley stepped down from that position some years ago, that they tapped me to recruit to City College to take over as the center director and keep up our partnership with the freestanding medical centers in New York City. But what I didn't expect was just how gratifying being at City College was going to be in terms of the colleagues that I've interacted with, an incredibly supportive administration being led by Lisa Joe Barber, the dean of the engineering school, and John Tarbell, the chair of the biomedical engineering department. And it's really been a visionary place and incredibly supportive, and I really did want to thank my colleagues and the supportive administrators. But what's really been special has been the exposure to the students. I've spent my life as a biomedical engineer in medical centers, teaching professional students and PhDs, and having little contact with undergraduates. And also, frankly, in a medical school, they don't really reward you for teaching. So this has been an extraordinary three-year experience for me in discovering the students and the gift that we have and the resource of the undergraduate students at City College and continuing on the mission that the biomedical engineering department has to pushing those students along, developing the field and increasing diversity, and I'm really proud to be a part of that. So the appointment at distinguished professor is just an extraordinary honor for me, so I want to thank the committee, thank Lisa and Joe Barber for pushing this through. I noted that it says that, in the quote there from the board, that City College and CUNY will be well-served by this appointment. On that, you have my commitment. Thank you.
It is a privilege to present to the board and my colleagues Dr. Carol Gould, candidate for distinguished professor and professor of philosophy at Hunter College, and I do so with great pride and enthusiasm. Dr. Gould is simply someone who has it all. She is a phenomenal scholar and a scholar with true impact. She is already a renowned and favored teacher, and she has been a wonderful, wonderful citizen at Hunter College. Dr. Gould came to us in September 2009 after we issued a search for philosophy professor. As all of you remember, that was a time when there were not that many searches ongoing for philosophy professors, and we had hundreds and hundreds of resumes. Dr. Gould rose quickly to the top, and we began a campaign to recruit her to Hunter College, noting not just her incredible scholarship and the feedback that it received from her colleagues, but a stunning breadth of her work in philosophy. It was social philosophy, political philosophy, ethics, philosophy of law. She's a real groundbreaker in feminist theory and feminist philosophy, and even the philosophy of the Internet. Her philosophical interests are brought together by a career-long effort to develop an adequate account of the individual as a social being while preserving an important emphasis on individual agency and freedom, and she is renowned for creating the project of social ontology and for giving a convincing account of the role of social cooperation in relation to the individual's development of capacities and achievement of goals. Perhaps particularly attractive to us at Hunter College at that time was Dr. Gould's real, very important role in groundbreaking work in philosophy and human rights. She had an important book, influential in political science world, called Rethinking Democracy, which was called groundbreaking in its approach to democratic theory, and noted by one of her evaluators that scholars who work on democratic theory consistently sing praise of this book. Her work in human rights is noted in the popularity of her book, Globalizing Democracy and Human Rights, which won the prestigious David Easton and Human Rights, which won the prestigious David Easton Book Award in Political Theory in 2009 from the American Political Science Association. Her list of fellowships is pages long, from the National Endowment for the Humanities, Fulbright, Rockefeller Foundation, among others. So to be able to bring Dr. Gould to Hunter College and have an impact in so many of our areas, from women's studies, our new human rights program, our political science, was really something that brought our faculty together and made us very fortunate in our humanities efforts. Dr. Gould quickly brought with her the Journal of Social Philosophy, which where she is serving as the editor, and has recently been elected as President of two national professional societies. In addition to these extraordinary scholarly contributions, Dr. Gould is now somebody who just creates traffic jams for us at Roosevelt House. She is one of the most favorite teachers in our new human rights program, and every time you approach the hallways there, there's just too many kids waiting to talk to her, which in my mind is the sign of somebody who is making an extraordinary, extraordinary contribution. And it's not just as a teacher, when she brought the journal to Hunter College, she immediately employed one of her students to be a research associate. So this is somebody who, while she does extraordinary scholarship, is always keeping our students in mind. Her work at Hunter College also includes really spearheading the new human rights program, which now has numerous, numerous students signing up to be both minor in it and to do certificates. And this program is only two years old, and to see this level of enthusiasm among our students for a very rigorous program is extremely rewarding, and Dr. Gould is one of the great leaders of this program. So we are very thankful, Carol, that you chose Hunter, that you found our ad. It was easy to find you in the hundreds of applicants, and it is a great pleasure, Chancellor and the board, to present Dr. Gould to you today. She is a great Hunter citizen and a great CUNY citizen. Thank you.[725.11][725.11](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Jennifer, for that magnificent introduction, and thank you, Chancellor Goldstein, and Executive Vice Chancellor Logue, and Board of Trustees, and the Chairman of the Board for this high honor. I'm really delighted to be part of what I take to be one of the very best public universities in the country, and to be able, to be working under the leadership of President Rab and Provost Rubinowitz at Hunter. It's exciting to be able to teach the fantastic undergraduates, just came from a really exciting seminar on deliberative democracy at Roosevelt House, and to be part of the human rights program there, which is really getting underway and is very exciting. I really, I'm glad to be able to teach philosophy in particular, which we like to think of as the queen of the sciences, but still also to bring its contemporary relevance to practical life. I think it's really important in the way it helps develop critical analytical skills that are useful for anyone working in a democracy, and also an emphasis on ethics and on concerns of social justice. So it's a great privilege. And our department there, as some of you know who are involved in it, is one of the finest undergraduate departments of philosophy in the country. It's had a long tradition, and it still continues that, I think. And I'm also pleased to work with doctoral students at the Graduate Center in Philosophy and Political Science, where I also have a forum on global ethics and politics. So it's just great for me, and I'm very, very appreciative of your support. A few just concluding remarks, I'd just like to mention that this high honor is especially gratifying to me because of my family connections to CUNY. My mother and my aunt were both Hunter College graduates way long ago, in the 1920s, I think, and they were exceptionally well-educated women. My son is a recent graduate of Hunter College High School and then a graduate of Harvard College in 2007. And last but not least, my husband, who was for many years before his passing in 1997, was distinguished professor of philosophy at Baruch College under the leadership of then-President Goldstein. And he and I share a vision of philosophy as having tremendous practical import, as well as being a high theoretical study. So thank you very much for this great honor.[903.23][903.23](APPLAUSE).
We will now proceed with item 4C. I just have to say that was extremely invigorating. It makes me so proud to be part of the CUNY family, but that was just my own editorial. And thank you for bringing those wonderful professors before us this afternoon. So I'll proceed with item 4C, which is the reappointment of Marilyn Flood to the CUNY Civil Service Commission. The City University of New York operates under the rules and regulations of its own civil service commission, as provided by the New York State Education Law and governed by the New York State Civil Service Law. The CUNY Civil Service Commission is comprised of three commissioners, each of whom serves a six-year term. Marilyn Flood has served as a commissioner since 1994 and assumed the role of chairperson in 2004. Her current term expires on May 31 of this year. This resolution will reappoint Ms. Flood to an additional six-year term commencing June 1, 2012. Mr. Chair, I present item 4C for the board's approval.
May I have a second, please? Thank you. Are there questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Thank you. Item 4D continues military leave and employer-paid health and welfare benefits coverage for university employees recalled from the reserves to active military service. In October of 2001, in response to the events of 9/11, the Board of Trustees passed a resolution extending military leave and employer-paid health and welfare benefit coverage for university employees recalled from the reserves to active military service. Each year since, as the campaign against terror has evolved, the board has renewed its support for these measures. Accordingly, this resolution authorizes the continuation of military leave and benefits for affected employees, including dependent healthcare coverage where applicable through December 2012. Mr. Chair, I present item 4D for the board's approval.
I'll second that. Are there questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Items 4E, F, and G pertain to three naming opportunities at Hunter College, which I represent as a group. They include the Arnhold Dance Education Programs and the Arnhold Distinguished Lecturer in Dance Education, the Ada, Lassanda, Ignacio, and Romano I Peluso Faculty Library, and the Ada Peluso Visiting Professor of Mathematics and Statistics. Together, these gifts total more than $2 million. The Board Committee on Faculty Staff and Administration has reviewed them and recommends their approval.
I'll second that. Are there questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, abstentions? Carry.
Mr. Chair, I present items 4E through 4G for the board's consideration. Oh, I already did that. Thank you. Items 4H, I, and J are also naming opportunities, which have been made in response to monetary gifts to our campuses aggregating more than $5 million. Again, I will present them as a group. They are the Lynn and Jules Knowles Atrium at John Jay College of Criminal Justice, the Everett Family Moot Court Room at CUNY School of Law, and the Arnold Koblyner Chair in Education at the City College of New York. Mr. Chair, I present items 4H through 4J for the board's consideration.
I'll second that. Are there questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those carry.
And finally, item 4K pertains to proposed changes to the tenure procedure outlined in the governance plan of the City College of New York. Currently, tenure at CCNY is voted on by an executive committee typically composed of five department faculty members, including the chairperson. The proposed amendment would establish a committee comprised of all tenured faculty members in each department, thus providing greater faculty participation and ensuring that input from the full range of the various sub-disciplines in a department are brought to bear on tenure decisions. It will also align CCNY's process with the tenure review practice at the majority of comparable research colleges and universities around the country. Mr. Chair, I present item 4K for the board's consideration.
I will second item 4K. Are there comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll hear now from the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. I'd like to call on Trustee Jeffrey Weisfeld.
Mr. Chairman, the following two resolutions came in late for prior review by the Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management meeting scheduled for February the 6th. Therefore, they're being brought before the Board of Trustees for consideration. Item number one, interdisciplinary high-performance computational center to authorize the execution of a consultant contract with Henningson Durham and Richardson for professional design and construction-related services as required for the IHPCC at the College of Staten Island. The City University Construction Fund intends to construct a 175,000 gross-square-foot academic and computational research building, which will serve CSI, CUNY, and other researchers in the greater New York area. In addition to the high-performance computational center, the building will also include classrooms, lecture halls, laboratories, and other spaces. The first new building constructed on the campus since it opened in 1993, this building will provide a home to the supercomputer now housed in Building 1M. The new building is described in the College of Staten Island Master Plan Amendment of 2010 as a significant mixed-use academic and research project to address the current space deficit at the college. The second item, LaGuardia Community College Center III Building Facade Design Project will authorize the selection of the architectural firm of Mitchell Gergola Architects LLP to provide professional services as required for the Center III Building Facade Design Project. LaGuardia Community College needs to replace the existing terracotta facade for the Center III building, and the proposed vendor will provide the required design services such as survey of existing conditions, a study of design alternatives, and preparation of design and construction documents. Constructed in 1914, the nine-story Center III building was purchased by CUNY in 1998. Its finish has reached the end of its useful life and requires replacement. The project will design a facade treatment to replace the 168,000 square feet of existing terracotta. I hereby request your approval of both of these calendar items.
Thank you. I'll second those two items. Are there questions for the committee on either of those? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, abstentions? Those carry.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the report of the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management.
Thank you very much. Calendar item number six is included in your calendar for informational purposes only. It serves as a notice of action taken by the Board of Trustees Executive Committee. On December 12, 2011, we approved four items recommended by the Chancellor. They are: CUNY School of Law, Academic Standards, Recommendations on Page 15 of your calendars; second, the City University of New York Lease Agreement, 135 East 25th Street, on behalf of Baruch College, Pages 15 through 16; third, City University of New York Lease Agreement at 2501-2511, Grand Concourse, the Bronx, New York; an honorary degree on Page 16; and Kingsborough Community College Appointment of Interim President, described on Pages 16 and 17. There being no further business for this public session, I declare it adjourned. We will have a brief executive session. Just a reminder that we do not plan to reconvene at the conclusion of the executive session.